Good evening. Tonight's meeting is called to order for the public hearing concerning docket number 20-SPEE-169-RTS. This docket was initiated by Southern Pioneer Electric Company's request to change its rates. I'm Sherri Feist Albrecht, Commissioner on the Kansas Corporation Commission. My colleague, Commissioner Susan Duffy, joins me in welcoming you and thanking you for attending this public hearing. I would also like to welcome those of you who are attending this hearing from Medicine Lodge High School via video conference and to introduce Commission Chairman Dwight Keen, who also joins us from Medicine Lodge, and I'm hoping that we can now cut to Medicine Lodge so that Chairman Keen can welcome you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Good evening to all. My name is Dwight Keen and I am Chairman of the Kansas Corporation Commission. It's an honor for the Commission this evening to conduct these onsite public hearings simultaneously in both liberal and medicine law. The program this evening provides Southern Pioneer customers with the opportunity to learn about the details of Southern Pioneer's proposed rate requests and to make public comments. With that, I will turn the program back over to Commissioner Albrecht.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Keen, and I would also like to extend a special welcome to several legislators we have in the audience. Former Representative Carl Holmes, Representative Shannon Francis from here in Liberal, Marty Malong from Elysus, and Boyd Orr from Fowler. Welcome. We look forward to hearing your comments this evening. They will become part of the official record and play an important role in the decision-making process. We'll conduct tonight's hearing in two parts. In the first part of this evening's meeting, you will hear presentations from representatives of Southern Pioneer, the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, or Curb, and from Commission staff. The Commission will not be present during Part One. Part One will be moderated by Assistant General Counsel to the Commission, Phoenix Anshuts. Part Two is the formal comment period that will be transcribed by the court reporter and added to the official record for the docket in this case. The Commissioners will be present for Part Two. I'd like to again thank you for attending tonight's meeting, and Commissioner Duffy and I will now depart the auditorium so that Part One may proceed.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Phoenix Anshuts and I am the pre-hearing officer assigned to this docket, and I will be moderating the first half of the proceeding this evening. I would first like to introduce some key people and parties in this case. Several members of the KCC's Public Affairs and Consumer Protection Team are here this evening and have been instrumental in setting up this public hearing. Those individuals include Linda Berry and Jake Fisher, who are both here in Liberal, and Sherri Eisenberg, who is in Medicine Lodge with Chairman Keen. Next, I would like to introduce those on the stage with me tonight. Immediately to my left is Carly Mazantin, Litigation Counsel for the Utilities Division staff. She will explain how staff investigates the company's application. Next to her is Robert Benson, Senior Litigation Counsel for the Utilities Division. Stephen Epperson is the President and CEO for Southern Pioneer Electric Company. With him is Glenda Cafer, the company's outside regulatory counsel. Finally, we have David Nichol, who is the Consumer Counsel for Curb. Curb by law represents residential and small commercial utility customers and investigates the company's applications as well. I would also like to note that our court reporter, Elaine Shogren, will be recording Part Two of the public hearing later this evening. With that, I believe we will move into this evening's presentations, and we will start with Glenda Cafer on behalf of Southern Pioneer.
Do it here? All right. Thank you. Good evening. As he said, my name is Glenda Cafer, and I am Regulatory Counsel in Kansas for Southern Pioneer. With me tonight on the stage is the CEO and President of the company, Stephen Epperson. I'd also like to introduce, we have there in the back, we can't see real good from up here in the dark, but so if you'd wave, we have Chantry Scott. He is the CFO, Vice President of Finance and Accounting for the company. And Michelle Rotolo, she's out there. She's Customer Account Supervisor. And also with her is Ruby Tazaras. Tazaras? Did I say that wrong? Okay. Ruby. They are at the desk out in the hallway, and they have all kinds of information about the company, general, about the filing tonight, as well as general information that might be of interest to you. Then in the location, Medicine Lodge, we have Lindsay Campbell is attending there. She is the Executive Vice President and General Counsel for the company. And with her is Amy Axline, the Consumer Account Specialist, and they can help anybody out in Medicine Lodge if you have questions after the hearing, whether it's about the application that we're here on tonight, or if you just got questions about your account or rates or programs, they have that information available and can help you. In addition to the notice that was sent out and your bill inserts that gave some general information about the application that Southern Pioneer filed in this case, there is also a handout sheet from the Commission that they put together that tells you kind of what the Commission's role is in this type of a proceeding and Curb's role in this proceeding, and it's got a couple of pages from Southern Pioneer that again gives some general information about the company and basic information about the filing. To assist you, we also put together a two-page sheet with some frequently asked questions and an overview of this filing that goes into a little bit more detail with some numbers in it that we hope is helpful to you. That's out there. If you didn't get it, make sure you grab one on the way out. And of course, if you want real detailed information, you can always go to the Commission's website and look at the testimony and application. If I can get this to work, so. There we go. A brief summary of how we got where we are right now. I think it's helpful so that you can understand where we are, what we're doing right now, and where we intend to go in the near future. If you understand where we came from. And Southern Pioneer really is a young company, for a utility company. In 2007, Southern Pioneer and some other companies out in Western Kansas, they got together and they created Mid-Kansas Electric for purposes of purchasing the old Aquila electric facilities out in Western Kansas. At the time that that purchase occurred, Mid-Kansas agreed that they would keep the old Aquila rates that were already approved by the Commission and in effect at the time, and the rules and regulations the Commission had approved for Aquila. And at that time, Mid-Kansas continued to hold the certificate officially as the public utility for the territories that comprised the Aquila, former Aquila territories. But they entered into contracts, and so companies like Southern Pioneer, the member companies, under these contracts, they are the ones that actually operated and provided the service. Now, those rates stayed in effect, the Aquila rates stayed in effect for about four or five years. And then in 2012, Mid-Kansas came in with Southern Pioneer and the other owners of Mid-Kansas, and they each filed, they filed rate cases because at that time, it was necessary to adjust rates so that instead of reflecting Aquila's historical rates, that they would reflect the cost of service, or as close as possible, of the companies that were providing service at the time. As part of that 2012 rate case, a class cost of service study was done and rates were adjusted. Then in 2013, Mid-Kansas went ahead with the next step in the process, which was to spin down those certificates or to transfer those public utilities certificates to the individual owner members of Mid-Kansas, including Southern Pioneer. So in 2013, Southern Pioneer became the official certificated public utility for these former Aquila territories that are now served by Southern Pioneer. The system, the former system of Aquila, needed some substantial investments in order to bring it up to a level of being able to provide ongoing acceptable service, reliable service, and to meet some of the emerging customer demands that were occurring at the time. The 2012 rate case put some rates into effect that reflected the cost of service at that time of Southern Pioneer for Southern Pioneer's territory. As part of that, there was a class cost of service study done. And what a study like that does, a cost consultant performs it, and they go in and they look at what is the cost of providing service to individual separate classes of customers? So like the residential class of customers, the small business, larger business. They look at those costs on a class basis and then recommend rates for those classes of customers that as close as possible can reflect the cost of providing service to them. That was done in the 2012 rate case. Thereafter, Southern Pioneer worked with the Commission staff, and they implemented what we call a formula-based rate mechanism so that annual adjustments thereafter in rates could occur to allow Southern Pioneer to go forward with its capital investment plans and the things that it needed to do in order to maintain service. The formula-based rate mechanism was used for adjustments, rate adjustments, for five years. It was a five-year plan, and it was in effect from 2014 until 2018. It worked very well. It's an abbreviated, shorter, less expensive regulatory process than a general rate case, and it worked very well because the company could come in and make these adjustments based on what was going on at the time. And the adjustments then would be more gradual, and customers would have a better opportunity to respond and react to those. It turned out in five years, that two of those years, the rate adjustments actually resulted in lower rates. The other three years, there was a slight increase in rates. Now, the Commission approved that FBR plan. It expired in 2018. It had worked very well, and so the company has made a filing with the Commission requesting that the Commission approve another FBR mechanism on a going-forward basis. That's a separate docket, not this case that we're here on tonight, and it was filed in December. But for this case that we're here on tonight, this is a rate case, and it is intended to adjust rates. Once again, like we did in 2012, we've hired a cost consultant who came in and looked at Southern Pioneer's cost and did a class cost of service study again. And that study has once again identified for us what the cost is of providing service to each of these individual customer classes. So we can see if the rates that we have an effect for each of those classes is reasonable in comparison to the cost of providing service. The information that we have identified or received from the cost consultant shows that we do need to make some adjustments. Our residential rates do not cover all of the costs of providing that service. Those rates, the revenue generated from that class is about $1.5 million less than needed to cover the cost. There's also a little bit of a shortfall in the general service, small, commercial customer class. It's a very small amount. And then the other thing it shows is that the revenue from the large general service, commercial customers, that's over recovering about $1.5 million. So this has shown us that there needs to be some type of realignment in these rates done. And that is what this case is about and what we have filed here. One thing that I would like to point out about the application is that it's revenue neutral. What that means is that if the Commission approves it as proposed, there is no increase in revenues to Southern Pioneer. What they're trying to do is realign rates within the classes. So rates will go down in one class, up in another. Overall, there will be no additional revenue received by Southern Pioneer. This is really just to try and alleviate, at least partially, some of the subsidies that are presently occurring in the existing rate structure. The application also proposes two new rates. One is tariff for LED lighting. Our existing tariffs reflect older technologies, the outdoor security and street lights that were using the mercury vapor, the high-pressure sodium and metal halide fixtures. But those technologies are not what people want anymore. When these lights go out and they have to be replaced, what people want are the LED lights because the bulbs last longer and they use less power. So we need to get a tariff in place for that new technology that's coming in. And another issue involved in that is that the suppliers and vendors of these lights, they're not continuing to support those old technologies. So this is something that needs to be done and put in place. So as we transition to the LED lights, we can shut down the old tariffs for that old technology and move into the LED technology with these tariffs and the rates that will be set by it. The second new rate is a grid access charge that will be for customers that in the future opt to participate in Southern Pioneer's net metering rider. The other change that's proposed in tariffs is just some cleanup language, but also some changes in the net metering rider that will bring that tariff into compliance with some of the changes that occurred in the legislative session in 2014 on a statutory amendment that occurred for the statute. So those two new rates and those tariff changes, they don't change existing rates of existing customers. Again, they're revenue neutral. Everything's revenue neutral in the case, but these as well don't change anything for existing customers. Now, what will change is, to existing rates, is this realignment between residential primarily and the large general service so that the rates are closer tied to the cost of providing service within those categories. The residential rate increase that's proposed is on the customer service charge, and it will be an increase on the residential customer service charge and the municipal service, customer service charge. It is an increase of $1.20 per year over three years. They're going to phase it in in three years so that you, at the end of three years, that customer charge will have increased a total of $3.60. There will be just a very slight increase in the energy charge for the general service, small customer class. And then offsetting those increases, there is a proposed decrease in the general service, large customer, energy rate, again, to bring those rates into alignment or closer alignment with the cost of providing service. That gives you an idea of where we are right now with some background of where we've been, how we got here. The future plans, the company continues to, as it makes these proposals and moves forward, they do that with certain goals in mind each time. One of which is to continue to be able to make the infrastructure investments that are needed in order to continue to provide quality, reliable service to the customers, to keep their rates and their services competitive, keep people on the system that benefits everybody, to continue this process of aligning rates so that they better reflect the cost of providing service within a class and reducing subsidies between what may exist, and then update services and tariffs so that they reflect the marketplace and customer demands and other small changes like legislative changes that need to be done to bring them into compliance. Overarching these goals is the goal of doing any changes in a way that is gradual, that brings the least impact to customers, that allows customers to react to changes and plan for them, and with this FBR mechanism, to do it in a way where it is the most cost-efficient process, and the company saves money for the company and customers, and ultimately rates by doing it in that manner. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you for being here tonight. We look forward to receiving your comments and taking them into consideration as we go forward on this case. And so thank you for making it happen tonight and provide us with that.
Thank you, Glenda. Our next presenter will be David Nichol, Consumer Counsel for Curb.
Good evening. My name is David Nichol. I'm Consumer Counsel for the Kansas Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, known by its acronym, Curb. Thank you all for attending in person, either here or in Medicine Lodge. This evening, I will tell you a little bit about Curb, its mission, its organization, and its role in rate cases such as this one. I want to also address the fundamentals of rate cases generally and the issues in this particular rate case. Curb was formed by the Kansas Legislature in 1989 because some thought that residential and small commercial ratepayers needed their own advocate in utility matters. Under the Kansas legislation, Curb consists of five board members, one from each Kansas congressional district and one board member at large. Board members are appointed for four-year stagger turns by the governor. Board members are volunteers. They are not paid for their services to the state of Kansas. The current board members are Mary Treister, represents this district. She is from Pretty Prairie. Patty is from Topeka. James L. Mullen II is from Overland Park. Melody McCray Miller is from Wichita. And Henry Hungerbeeler is from Leavenworth, Kansas. He is the Curb's at-large board member. The board members direct the activities to the Consumer Counsel. That means they act as my boss. In turn, I manage the Curb staff. Besides myself, Curb has six members. It has two additional attorneys other than me. It has two business analysts, and it has two administrative staff. So we're a very small Kansas agency. We operate on less than $1 million a year in terms of all the work that we do throughout the year. Our mission forms from the statutes which govern Curb. Curb's mission is to zealously represent residential and small commercial utility payers, ratepayers, in three different venues. The first venue, of course, is before the Kansas Corporation Commission, or the KCC. These cases typically file or rate cases. In these cases, the KCC determines what rates utilities can charge their customers. Other KCC cases involve issues of whether utilities can engage in certain practices, such as engaging in electric vehicle charging stations, entry into energy efficiency programs, and other types of practices. The second venue where Curb is involved is before the Kansas Legislature. And we appreciate the fact that we have legislators here tonight. As you can imagine, there are many legislative bills that are passed every year pertaining to utility bills. Curb has testified before the Kansas Legislature on such matters as to how gas pipelines should be paid for, energy efficiency legislation, utility rate studies, among other matters. The third venue that Curb is involved in is before the Kansas courts. These matters are generally appeals of Kansas Corporation Commission orders. One of the key roles that Curb has, of course, is its involvement in rate cases. It is important to note that Curb is only a party or a stakeholder in these proceedings. It does not determine what rates are. That's the job for the Kansas Corporation Commission. Curb advocates for what it believes utility rates should be in each case. However, the KCC determines those rates. Now, there are two aspects of a rate case. The revenue requirement determines how much should be earned from all ratepayers in order to allow the utility to pay its expenses and to have a reasonable opportunity for profit. Now, that rate can't be too high because that would not be fair to ratepayers, clearly. On the other hand, it can't be too low. No company should ever be required to provide its services for free at the mandate of government. So the Kansas Corporation Commission really balances the revenue requirement between all interested parties. Once the revenue requirement is determined, the next question is utility rate structure. And that is, how is the various rate classes going to contribute to the overall revenue requirement? Generally, those are based upon how much cost each rate class costs the utility. And that way, it's reasonable and fair to all classes. Now, in every rate case that I've been involved in, when you get to rate design, it's an art more than a science. And rate utility and structure analysts will vary wildly as to what is fair between rate classes. In rate cases, there are quite a few stakeholders. There are, of course, the utility, in this case, Southern Pioneer, but residential and small commercial ratepayers are also stakeholders, and that's who we represent. There are other interested stakeholders, such as municipalities who might be concerned with street lighting, industrial customers, solar customers, and the like. In our case, we represent only residential and small commercial ratepayers. We do understand that other interested stakeholders, including the utility, may take issue with our testimony. That's okay. As those divergent views are important to the rate-making process. By virtue of Southern Pioneer's testimony, which is supported by evidence, and Curb's testimony in this matter, which will be supported by evidence, and the evidence that will be submitted by other interested stakeholders, if there are any, the Commission has a palette of information, a palette of evidence, from which to try to balance the interest of the parties. In fact, the Commission is required to consider all of the evidence in the record and to be fair to all parties involved, including the utility, residential consumers, small commercial ratepayers, et cetera. Now, in this particular case, Southern Pioneer is not asking, as Ms. Cafer testified or indicated, is not asking for any type of overall revenue increase. What they are asking is for the residential class to increase their customer charge, as Ms. Cafer alluded to, by $1.20 for each of the next three years for an aggregate of $3.60 increase in the customer charge. One thing that Curb does appreciate about this application is Southern Pioneer's One thing that Curb does appreciate about this application is Southern Pioneer's willingness to graduate any increase in terms of customer service charge over a period of years. That's helpful to our consumers. However, we are concerned with this rate increase. We have not entered our testimony in this case. We're still studying it, and we will present our testimony with regard to that rate increase when the time comes. We are also concerned with regard to the access customer charge with regard to solar customers. It does pertain only to future customers, as Ms. Caffer alluded to, but again, it's something that we're looking at. It's approximately $6 per kilowatt capacity for a new solar customer, so it's a matter that we're looking at to see, of course, if that is fair to the solar customers, as those may very well be residential customers also. One thing that we can talk about, the commission will enter all this evidence and then weigh the interests of the parties and come up with a fair result. So that's the need for public input. We will be able to testify generally about what our classes believe is fair and reasonable, but we really can't testify how these rates affect you as residential customers. Only you are competent to testify about how these rates affect you personally. So we appreciate the fact that you're here. We want to know what the effect of these rates will be upon you. We also want to know if there are other concerns that you may express. Again, I want to thank you for coming tonight and for taking time to express your concerns and your comments to the commission.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Carley Massantine, and I work for the Corporation Commission as an attorney and represent the commission's technical staff during the proceedings at the KCC. So so far tonight, you've gotten to meet a couple of our commissioners and Commissioner Keen, who's in Medicine Lodge, and you've gotten to meet the company, and you've gotten to hear from Curb, and I will be talking to you guys from the perspective of the commission's staff, who I represent. Okay, so tonight, I will be providing an overview of some of the core functions of the KCC as a whole, as well as some overview about Southern Pioneer's rate case, although I probably won't go into too much detail, as you've just heard that from Glenda and from David Nichol. But my presentation will include information on the docket proceedings, who the commission's staff is, how staff will analyze Southern Pioneer's request, and how members of the public can stay informed and involved through that process. So the Kansas Corporation Commission is a state agency that is made up of three commissioners. They are Chair Dwight D. Keen, Commissioner Sheri Feist Albrecht, and Commissioner Susan K. Duffy. The commissioners are appointed by the governor and serve staggered four-year terms. As a commission, they have jurisdiction to oversee a number of industries. To assist the commission in this role, they have a staff of professionals in fields like accounting, economics, and engineering who are available to provide guidance and input, and that is who I represent. The commission's staff are state of Kansas employees or consultants hired by the state. They have a tremendous amount of professional knowledge and training in fields like accounting, economics, engineering, and financial analysis. Many of our staff members have earned master's degrees or PhDs, and we have members from these areas of expertise here tonight, I believe, in case you have any questions for them. So during proceedings before the commission, staff advocates for the public generally, which is another way of saying that they balance the interests of all utility customers, the long-term health of the utility, and the state of Kansas. Staff acts sort of like a referee in attempting to weigh numerous competing interests and develop a position that serves everyone as best as it can. So to go into a little bit of Southern Pioneer's request, you've heard some of this, but Southern Pioneer is proposing a neutral revenue requirement, which means there will not be a raise in the total amount Southern Pioneer seeks to recover through its rates. Southern Pioneer is requesting to implement an increase in its customer charge of $1.20 per year for the next three years. The phasing of incremental yearly increases of $1.20 is in line with the general ratemaking principle of gradualism, which seeks to minimize the effect of a rate increase on customers. And since their last rate case, Southern Pioneer claims there is evidence that some classes might be subsidizing others, or that certain classes just aren't paying for the cost to serve them, but the cost to serve some other class. Staff will be looking into Southern Pioneer's claims regarding that matter as they investigate Southern Pioneer's request. One goal of ratemaking is to have each class of customer, whether that be residential or industrial, et cetera, pay what it costs to serve them. So cross-class subsidizations are not ideal because they effectively have one class picking up the cost of another class. Southern Pioneer is hoping to fix this through a reallocation of costs to correct classes, and staff will be investigating Southern Pioneer's approach to ensure it is just and reasonable. Along the same goal of preventing one class from subsidizing another, Southern Pioneer is proposing to implement a grid access charge for customers who will be coming on to use distributed generation resources like renewables. Southern Pioneer claims it has received an increasing amount of inquiries into the cost of implementing renewable resources for residential households, and they want to ensure rate structures for distributed generation customers are predictable, just, and reasonable. Southern Pioneer is also requesting an LED lighting tariff to implement more efficient lighting options for customers who take service under the tariff. So kind of going into more in-depth with staff's review of an application, once an application for a rate case is filed, the commission's staff conducts an independent review of the company's requests. This review includes an in-depth examination of the company's finances, which allows our staff to evaluate the application for accuracy and for compliance with Kansas law and the commission's regulations. The investigation also includes identification of any positive or negative impacts on customers, the utility, and the public generally. So during this investigation, staff determines which costs the utility is entitled to recover in their rates. That is, what are the costs that are necessary to provide electric service, and staff determines which costs are not appropriate to recover from customers. Finally, staff also evaluates the structure of the utility's rates to ensure that they are fair and based on the underlying cost to serve each of those classes. After its investigation is complete, staff will submit written testimony and indicate its position on the application. Staff will actively participate in the rate case process by advocating for that position, and staff's role is not to help one party over another, but rather to provide independent assistance to the commission in balancing the competing interests and evaluating the total impact of the application on the public interest. All right, so moving along, we have some dates on the screen that kind of go into what's going to happen next. So under the current schedule, staff and intervenor testimony is due on February 17th, a little over a month from now. There will be a settlement conference held on March 13th, and then later that month, if necessary, there will be an evidentiary hearing, which spans the dates of March 31st to April 1st. An important date to remember is April 2nd. The public comment period will end at 5:00 PM on April 2nd. So if you intend to submit a comment in this docket, you must submit your comments by 5:00 PM on that date. And finally, a commission order deciding this matter will be issued on June 8th, 2020. If you have any additional questions about this case, commission staff is here and available to answer questions, or you can contact the commission's Office of Public Affairs and Consumer Protection, and their number is on that screen. I might leave that up just for a couple seconds in case anybody wants to jot that down. And then finally, I want to leave you with some information on how you can submit a public comment in this docket, or how you can follow this case on our website. So the first way that you can make a comment is tonight, in person, following the question and answer session. These proceedings will go on record, and your comment will be a part of the formal docket. Or there are three convenient ways for you to make your comment directly to our Public Affairs Office. You can do that online, by mail, or by phone, and the information for each of these is, again, up on the screen. You can also follow along with any of the proceedings in this docket on our website. So if you go to the kcc.kas.gov and go to the docket filings tab, enter in the docket number, and you can see all of the filings that have been made in this docket so far. And the KCC staff would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It really is, public opinion truly is important, and we appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to come and spend it with us and learn a little bit more about this case, and we welcome any questions that you may have for commission staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Massantine. This will conclude Part 1 of tonight's proceedings. I hope you found this informative and understanding Southern Pioneer's request and the commission's process and its evaluation and decision regarding that request. In Part 2, the commissioners will hear your comments, but they are not permitted to engage in dialogue or answer any of your questions. They are merely here to listen. The court reporter will record your statements as you present them. If you prefer to submit written comments, you may do so. If you have lengthy comments, it may be best to submit them in writing. The commissioners consider your comments important to the decision-making process. The legislature has charged the commission with the responsibility of balancing both utility and ratepayer interests to arrive at a decision which best serves the public interest. If you wish to address the commission with comments in Part 2, please complete the sign-in sheet located with the public affairs staff at your location, if you haven't done so already. Finally, if you have written comments to submit, please identify yourself orally and provide the court reporter with the comments. With that, we will take a brief pause while the commissioners rejoin us and reconvene in approximately 10 minutes. Thank you.
If no one is taking a break, I think we will just proceed. Let me ask Medicine Lodge, are you taking a break or are you proceeding? So Chairman Keen, we're debating whether to take a break or to dispense with the break. I think we're good with moving right ahead, if you are.
Yes, let's move on.
Okay, we will do so. All right. Good evening. I'm calling to order, we're starting Part 2, by the way, and this is the part for the court reporter. Good evening. I'm calling to order the Kansas Corporation Commission public hearing regarding docket number 20-SPEE-169-RTS. This docket was initiated by Southern Pioneer for purposes of requesting a change in rates. My name is Sheri Feist Albrecht. I'm a commissioner on the Kansas Corporation Commission. My colleague, Commissioner Susan Duffy, joins me in welcoming you and thanking you for attending this public hearing this evening. I would also like to welcome those of you who are attending this hearing from Medicine Lodge High School via video conference, as well as Commission Chairman Dwight Keen, who also joins us from Medicine Lodge. This hearing is on the record, and the transcript will become an important part of the official docket file. May I have the appearances of counsel, please?
Carley Massantine and Robert Vincent on behalf of commission staff.
Glenda Caffer on behalf of the applicant, Southern Pioneer electorate.
David Nichol on behalf of Curb.
Does staff have a recommendation regarding notice?
Staff has examined the notice and recommends finding that notice was proper. The commission issued an order setting the procedural schedule on December 19th, 2019, and then an amended order setting the procedural schedule on December 31st, 2019. Each order noted the public hearing taking place tonight and the time and locations of this hearing. Additionally, notice was provided in local newspapers, and the KCC issued a press release on January 2nd, 2020 notifying the public of this hearing. For the above reasons, staff recommends a finding of proper notice.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. I will find that notice was proper, and the commission has jurisdiction to proceed on this public hearing at this time and place. Thank you very much, all of you, for attending. This hearing is an important step in our decision-making process, and we look forward to your comments. As a reminder, we cannot engage in dialogue with you during the proceeding. However, we may ask clarifications if necessary, questions if necessary for clarification. At this juncture, I would say that I have a list of people who have been dedicated that they would like to comment. However, that is not the case, and it's my understanding that there are no members of the public who desire to make public comment in Medicine Lodge. Is that correct, Chairman Keen?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So I will just ask, if any of you in the audience would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to do so, and if you would just come to the microphone in front of us, you're welcome to make a comment. If not, this hearing will be rather brief. Anybody in Medicine Lodge wishing to make a comment? I don't hear any response. I don't see any response here at the hearing site in liberal. So as a reminder, the public comment period will remain open through April 2nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Options for submitting comments can be found in the materials handed out this evening. The evidentiary hearing in this matter is scheduled to begin in Topeka on March 31st, 2020 at 10:30 AM at the Topeka's Commission's Topeka office. The commission must issue a decision on or before June 8th, 2020. This concludes the public hearing. We thank you very much for your participation. We are adjourned, and I wish everyone safe travels home. Thank you very much.